Okay, we are gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you all are stuck with just Jeff and myself today because Western Commissioner is out, so...
Okay.
Uh, amendments or reports received and filed?
We do not have any today.
Uh, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, let's see, today Sam Bushman's birthday is on my calendar. Just wanted to make sure you remembered. I know you're kinda getting forgetful these days. Happy birthday, Sam. Uh, the Wednesday, the Build My Future with Home Builders Association will be at the J.C. Fairgrounds all day. Thursday's a Traffic and Safety Board Advisory Meeting, LAPC Meeting. Uh, be the Special Olympics Ladies Night Out Thursday night fundraiser. Saturday, Lincoln University has a home football game. And then County Flu Shots up here at Commission Chambers, I think, Monday, right? Okay. And then I know we've got some other football games and stuff Friday, but good luck to all those local teams. That's it.
Okay. Uh, today, Jefferson Banks had my reception for J.C. and reading. My, I think, Library Board has their Board of Trustees meeting. Thursday is LAPC. And then, do we have Traffic and Safety?
Yes.
Okay. That's at 8:00 AM. Then that evening, our two-hundred-and-fiftieth Committee. And Saturday is MU Homecoming, so... Right. Okay. Then the Flu Shots, that's everything I've got, so... Okay, presentation from staff consultants and invited guests. The MSP Redevelopment River Market Project update. So, Bob, is it you?
It's a, yeah, it's a tag team here. Uh, I'll go ahead and get it kicked off, I guess. Thank you, Sam and Jeff, for having us. We thought it'd be good just to give an update of where things are at. We're kind of on a little bit of a public, uh, open house blitz right now with several meetings going on. And so we just wanted to update the county on what's, what's going on. Obviously, um, you're all funding within the Chestnut Street Corridor, too. We wanna kinda give you an idea of what's going on within the corridor. But also, uh, we're, we're gearing up to do the design of Chestnut itself for construction as well. So, lots of history here. Uh, and by the way, I probably should stop and say, uh, my partner in crime here is Rachel Sensi with City. She'll help out with, uh, presenting. I've also got Clint Smith, uh, Brian Crane, Dave Helmick, and the mayor, Ron Fitzwater's here. Got the big, got a big team here. So, uh, got lots of people who can answer questions. Uh, I'm just gonna kinda start with the, the big picture. And again, lots of history here as to what's, what's occurred for planning on the property. Uh, but back in the spring, um, you know, the city was, was working on ideas to, uh, start, kickstart some development on the MSP site. Uh, we worked on some concepts. Uh, what you see on the screen, uh, actually there are some updated concepts even from last week. So, we're, we're currently just getting, I'll call it, rolling with further, uh, design concepts. And then, uh, the goal is to get to construction by next July, uh, which sounds like it's a long ways away, but, uh, we have to move very quickly to do that. And so, we're in, uh, kind of a, again, a phase of a lot of public input right now to see what ideas are out there, uh, that we can go into implementation of, of design. So, I'll give you just kind of an overview of the site, I guess, uh, with relating, related to the River Market. And then we kinda end with a typical section of what Chestnut would look like as well. Uh, but I'll just jump right into presenting some of this and then stop and get your comments. Or if you have anything else you wanna add before I roll into that?
No, go ahead and roll in, we'll...
Okay. Yeah, I should probably mention, last, last week, we were at the Parks and Rec Commission of the City, the Historic Preservation Commission for the City. Also, uh, tonight, actually, is our public open house, and it's gonna be onsite. So, we'd love to have anybody, uh, present who'd like to come. We're gonna be onsite and meet basically at the, uh, I'll call it, the old state parking lot, kinda where the, where the, the opening and the walls are, right, right at the corner of Chestnut and Capitol. So, we're gonna be onsite tonight from four to six, if, if anybody would like to join us.
We can have hot chocolate and coffee?
I, I know some refreshments are planned, but actually, hot chocolate is a really good idea. After, after, yeah, this morning.
That's for the opening.
Okay.
All right. So, what you're looking at on screen here, uh, again, shows one open-air pavilion. Uh, it's approximately about eighty by fifty in dimension. And then the other building, kind of in the background, it's got a little bit of a curved roof on this image, uh, is a restroom facility. So, uh, really, kinda, kinda basic from the standpoint of, of buildings. Uh, but you can see, uh, some parking, obviously, and then a loop road. Uh, one of the elements we're wanting on the loop road is making it wide enough that we can, uh, uh, bring in some food trucks as well for events, which are kinda represented by some of those larger vehicles on the outside. What this basically represents is kind of a, a back-in, if you will, a kinda farmer's market or other type of market. Uh, we've had some public input about, you know, craft markets or other, other types like that. But basically, the vendors can kinda back up. And then the, the, the customers essentially are kinda walking through the pavilion, uh, being served that way. Um, what you see on this is a little bit different than maybe earlier versions. Is, uh, to the left of the pavilion, there's kind of another grassed, uh, rectangle. Uh, that's actually been set up because we're starting to think about ways to expand this. So, that actually would be available for tent and other, other vendor. Uh, you can see some trucks and vans backed up there with some fruits and vegetables or something there, uh, on the image. But, uh, that can be open-air or, obviously, tents could be used there. And then, we also wanted to give that expandability, uh, an option, uh, for the future. So, that's, again, kinda like what you saw in the spring, but a little bit of, of modification based on some input we've already been getting, uh, here in the last few weeks. And, uh, I'll just keep, keep, uh, rolling through some of the images. These first few just go through, uh, different views of the same thing. So, uh, I should probably mention Chestnut is the cul-de-sac you see there. Uh, on the bottom right is a gray rectangle. That's the state, uh, health lab parking lot, basically, that's already under construction now. Uh, the, the, uh, greenway is along Chestnut on, on the west side, and then it would continue up to Lafayette. Okay, this is looking kinda more from the river, I'll call it, side, back towards the historic quad. The walls in the background are just some of those existing walls that, that kinda lift up, uh, that, that very, uh, tall area, I'll call it, where the, where the historic quad is. Again, same, same image, just different, different views. And again, similar here. Uh, this does obviously show some pretty good topography there where the, uh, state buildings are in the background. It's, it's not, you know, superimposed with a vertical image, but that's actually Lewis and Clark, uh, DNR Building on the, on the very top of that hill back there in the background. And then the state, uh, health lab is what's gonna go in on the, on the right side. Uh, but this, again, shows you where some of that future expansion could happen. Uh, also, in the green space right in front of you, on, on the bottom right, you'll see some stuff here and a few other images that we are planning this, such that other things could happen, uh, on the site as well and be served by, again, things like the parking and the, and the loop road. Um, this image just tries to show you the, the expandability of, of the site. The first two top images are the same, they're just different views. And then as you go kinda down to the bottom right, and a pav- a pavilion could be added. And then you go to the left, and I'll call it, a half a pavilion can be added on the riverside, and another either pavilion or other multi-use facility of any other kind could, could be added on the site. So, we're just trying to create some flexibility so that what's built, you know, first, uh, can accommodate more, uh, development, uh, down the road. Okay. This is, uh, another image, uh, more of a, call it, engineering image of the, uh, the site plan and layout. Again, it's not that different, I'll call it, than what was presented in the spring. Uh, one of the new things that has been, um, I guess, discovered and, and something that we're working around is that blue line. If you look at it just west of Chestnut there, uh, that is an existing, uh, storm tunnel uh, that is, uh, very deep and rather old. Uh, it goes under, uh, the prison walls. Uh, it goes under the prison site as well. And so, we are adjusting some of our planning to basically avoid that and try to leave that in place, uh, right where it is. So, uh, that's been a kind of a new discovery as we've gotten started, uh, with design. Now, we've got survey, uh, we got more information.
So, what's the age of that tunnel? I'm, I'm just a curious person.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. Sam is very, I, it's almost gotta be over a hundred years old. I, I don't know. You know, the, the prison obviously started at the top of the hill and then other things developed over years. I didn't look and try to find out when the, the factories and other things that were built down the bottoms here, uh, were built, but, uh...
They're mostly turn of the century.
Is it brick line? Is it a brick?
It, it is stone and masonry work. Uh, yeah, the, the outfall at the river is a, uh, it's a, a tall arch of stone and masonry.
Yeah, we discovered, when we were doing, I don't know if we were doing the sidewalks, but we discovered a tunnel heading west that was, was arched. I think Irish brick, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, it's, there's, again, a lot of history there. Uh, again, as we've surveyed along the Chestnut Corridor, there are, there are several old utilities and vaults and other things that served the prison or, or its, uh, factories or developments over the years. Uh, so, yeah, we're, uh, trying to avoid as much of that as we can. But most of it's been abandoned, of course. But, uh, that, that storm tunnel is still active. Uh, it drains, it drains all the way up to High Street and probably over to Lafayette and over to basically Riverside, uh, parks. I mean, that's, it's a big drainage way that's, uh, all collecting and going into that, that old tunnel. So, we are adjusting, uh, what you see on the screen there a little bit from what was originally there, just based on the, the survey in Toko. I'm getting a sign-in required on this, uh, is that?
It's 'cause you went over your time a little bit.
Did I?
Thank you.
Almost done, almost done, great. Okay. This is that same kinda, you know, bird's-eye view image again, just, just showing some of the, the expandability that happens over time. The upper left is kinda where we think this is gonna start. So, again, one pavilion, one restroom, and, uh, and, and parking in the loop road, uh, with kind of that little plaza area in the middle. Uh, and then the next image, I think, is, is where it shows Chestnut. So, what you might be most interested in, 'cause that's where the county funds are at. Uh, Chestnut on the bottom, a little bit hard to see those dimensions from here. But basically, this, I, I kinda call it, it matches the Capitol Avenue typical section. It's probably one of the easiest roads to kinda reference. It's fairly, that's fairly new that people, uh, may, may know about. But it's got parking on both, uh, sides. Uh, where we can get it, uh, some of the, uh, some of the, the prison, uh, wall and guard towers do kinda bump out a bit. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna be limited in some places as to where we can get it on-street parking. But we're gonna go for on-street parking, uh, there to help with, uh, again, future needs along Chestnut. Uh, sidewalk on one side, greenway, path on the other. So, that's, that's where we're headed. The upper image on the left is, uh, an image of, of where the wall demolition is going to occur that the, the city has approved here in the last couple of weeks, uh, with coordination with the state, obviously, as well. Uh, but that basically starts, the, the red line is where the wall demo is. It's, the, the starting point down on Chestnut is, is right at one of the guard towers. Demo's around the corner, and then, uh, uh, ends kinda at, at the upper left there. And there's one guard tower in the midst of that, uh, that area along the river that would remain as well.
And what, reuse that stone, taking the walls down?
The, yeah, the, the...
Some future...
So, the, the stone, the wall itself is, is owned by the state of Missouri. We own the property underneath it, but they reserve the rights. Um, we're working with them on that, um, as far as the demolition of the wall and whether or not they wanna recap, re, if we would move that stone up to the upper yard, if, if it'll make it. Um, a lot of the wall on the lower is, uh, a rubble fill. It's not stuck solid throughout. Um, it's kind of a facade, and then they fill it with, with smaller pieces of stone in the middle. So, it doesn't really hold up that well when you, when you take it apart.
Okay.
But we can try.
I'll give as much history as we can.
Sure.
Sure.
Uh, so, that, that's it in terms of the, the images we wanted to share with you all. But, uh, again, we're, we're kind of in this phase here of gathering as much input from stakeholders as we can, uh, so that we can kinda hit the ground running hard with, uh, uh, construction and design documents, uh, through the winter uh, to get ready for, for spring bidding and, and July construction. So, uh, I guess with that, I'm not, anything else to add?
Yeah, a few things. Uh, so, the, you know, the, the priority is that, is that River Market because we have that looming dead- deadline of, of July twenty-fifth, or July of twenty-five, that we have to start construction. Um, and then, of course, Chestnut Street, that needs to support the River Market as well as the One Health Lab. Uh, but then we, we're kind of also starting to formulate future phases of what this could look like. Um, so, we've entered into, well, recently, we're still waiting on the paperwork with the Missouri Department of Conservation. Uh, we really wanna utilize not only the historic site of, of MSP, um, but also the river. Um, I feel like this community does, has done a self-critical, poor job of utilizing the river in the past. So, we wanna bring, um, bring that asset back. Um, so, we're talking with, with MDC about doing a two-year invasive removal project. And we actually just, um, they provided herbicide to do the first spraying yesterday. Um, so, that, that corner piece that's very vertical in Chestnut, they sprayed also along the wall and the river front. That'll take two years to remove that. Um, and then we're working with Department of Natural Resources on applying for another grant, um, to be able to do full trail build-out and potentially a connecting bridge, um, from MSP to Deborah Cooper Park or Adrian's Island. Um, and then also connecting the greenway from the DNR Building, connecting to the shoe factory. Um, so, we've got these layered phases. Um, but all of that is, is utilizing the funding mechanisms that we exist, that we currently have um, to be able to leverage additional resources. Um, so, for the county's one-point-five million dollars that they're contributing for Chestnut Street build-out, uh, we currently have a six-point-seven million dollar project. And so, if we keep adding these layers and these partners and other grant, uh, funding mechanisms, we can keep building off of that and using what has already been publicly invested in the site. So, that's kind of the overall vision of, of where we're going, is really that public space component. Um, getting the River Market in place, getting Chestnut, getting, you know, having the state open up One Health Lab. And then we're talking about really making it look nice and beautifying and connecting. Um, and then hopefully, you know, once that's done, then we can invite private investment to the table 'cause it'll be less risky for them to invest in that area at that point.
I think it's wonderful. It's been, MSP's been dormant for so long. We've had all these plans, so I'm glad to see something happen. And with the state campus to the, to east of that, I think. So, is Chestnut gonna be the main entrance then to state and to the market? Or will they have a, that's gonna be the main?
It, it will be. It'll, it'll be the, the only access, uh, to, to both sides of, of Chestnut, basically. The, the state's plans for the One Health Lab do show, I'll call it, kind of a future connection between the Lewis and Clark Building and the state health lab. I think it's still, we're, we're still investigating with them, are they gonna go ahead with that connection or not? But theoretically, somebody could drive from Chestnut up to Lewis and Clark eventually down the road when those are connected.
I think that's good.
Good. Well, thanks for the comments. Yeah, we're just wanting, again, to get, get this, uh, get this information out there, start gathering any feedback people have. Uh, we still have time to make some modifications, but we're, we're going pretty fast, so, uh, if you have any thoughts, comments, please?
So, just one question, maybe I overlooked it, but after all of this development is in place, has any thought been given to traffic mitigation in Chestnut and Capitol?
I wouldn't say there's any, any at this point because the, the volumes that we're gonna be expecting are really fairly low. I mean, these are, if you look at kinda what the parking capacity is there, um, you know, we're talking kind of a max of...
But I was thinking with the lab building and all of that, I don't know what the requirement is and all of that.
Yeah. Good, good question, Ralph. I, I, we have not been involved in the state health labs design, or I'd have to ask more of the city folks if they were involved in anything related to that.
I would just say that's one of the reasons they wanted a wide Chestnut Street. Originally, I looked at just a two-lane, but they really wanted a wider surface area. So, you're gonna see, um, I don't, can you see the distance? Uh, it's dump, it's parking on both sides with, uh, wide dual lanes, um, with trails and the sidewalk. So, it's gonna be a pretty wide street scape through there and trying to accommodate that.
Thank you. Going back a few years, um, the city and county cooperative projects, we've done a lot to get to this point. Uh, MSP, we called it MSP redevelopment, which that fed several different projects, which the Lafayette Interchange on Highway fifty, sixty-three. And as we were doing that and looking, and this was the team of city and county, you know, staff working together to figure out how to get up to MSP, we decided and determined that, that basically, you know, two-lane, one in, one out, with a center turn lane was the appropriate template for that. And so, if you look around, a lot of those roads have that, or just a two-lane. So, uh, to fully answer your question, Ralph, I think, you know, based on what we kinda projected traffic growth in the area and everything, I think it's fully adequate for that, so, yeah. But there's a lot of different city-county projects to get to this point.
Yeah.
All on Capitol, all along Lafayette, um, the whole corridor is really, come, this is kinda coming to full fruition with this being done, so, it's a good, good cooperative.
I did have a few questions. I hadn't been into your other meetings with this. I mean, I think it's a great idea to utilize the riverfront and get something down in that area. So, with it being on that riverfront, is that gonna be in the flood area? Is that gonna be set up?
No, it, it's, uh, yeah, the, the, I, I probably should get an image that maybe shows you kinda where that is. The, the floodplain is very nearby, uh, but the railroad is kinda up above that level. Uh, it, it's essentially kinda right out about the, the floodplain level, Jeff, but...
Back there, Monticello, go back there, just out of curiosity, what all is going there? So, I did see it, I didn't remember it offhand.
The, the other, the other component we didn't mention yet, but, uh, the, the site is likely gonna be raised a decent amount because, uh, if you, if you go down there for the public meeting night, you'll see this. But the state health lab is really high on the high side of that hill that was on that other image. And then, to, to be able to thread the needle with Chestnut, we're gonna be kinda in between that elevation and, and the site elevation. So, it's, it's likely that the site is actually gonna be higher than what you see today because of that, that need to be matching at, at Chestnut. So, that'll help as far as any kind of flood impacts, it's gonna be up, up above that by quite a bit.
So, you're calling it River Market, but, I mean, is it open for other functions? Or is city gonna own that, or is Parks gonna own it, or who's?
It'll be Parks and Rec will operate the facility. Um, and, and again, like, we're, we kinda took it, I mean, we've kinda fallen down a couple of times on the site and tried to get back up. So, we're trying, what can we do? Um, so, we have, we have the, a community revitalization grant, uh, for two-point-one million that is, uh, you know, we're gonna focus that, almost that entire grant on the River Market facility and try to have it be multi-use as much as possible. Um, and then also with that ability to expand. And then, as I mentioned, if we can, if we can get the site looking nice and attractive, then maybe private development could come in, and then it becomes more of a, like a true market.
Things, we could've had a birthday party for Sam, or, you know, I mean, I mean, it's another little park area. You can walk down there, that goes all the way over to the island, and so, I mean, I've walked all the way up there. Yeah. It was a little shady through the woods, but, you know.
Commissioner, it will be a rentable facility through Parks and Rec.
Okay. Like I said, I think it's a great idea, being out by the river and take advantage of that.
No, we need to get started on, on the, so, I, I'm, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's great.
Good, thank you for the input. I don't wanna say the bad H-word, and I'm not talking about H-E double hockey sticks. I'm saying the, the homeless down there. I mean, you think that's gonna be a problem with them taking it over and doing anything to it? Or gonna be able to keep that in check? I think it's gonna be something we have to watch.
With any other public facility, I would imagine. You know, parks generally can be, uh, attractive, uh, to that audience. But I think the more life and vibrancy and the activity that you have, the, the activity is important in environmental design.
Downhill because of that. And that's kind of, things like that's a place for a lot of memorial, so, cool?
Definitely, the activity is kinda what we're after. We wanna, uh, create a busy, busy place, and that's, again, usually where we get a lot of more variety of people that, that come. I, I think, you know, we have Parks deals with that a lot. We, we also, uh, I guess as far as trying to, uh, work on the structure itself, we're, we're certainly still looking at the budget and can, can we get this? But, uh, we also, and other park pavilions that we have in, in the city, uh, none of those can have actual, I'll call it, pull-down overhead doors to actually make it more of like a three-season pavilion. So, we're gonna be looking at that. Uh, that also creates a little bit more security potentially, uh, for a facility. Uh, but that's not really the purpose. It's more about trying to create some kind of three, three-season operation. Again, it's something that Parks does not have access to today, and their master plan certainly supports more pavilion space. Uh, there's a lot of need for more. Uh, they're, they're, they're getting use out of the other ones they have. Uh, but we're trying to make this one a little bit different in, in the idea of maybe having some exterior, uh, doors, either initially or at some point, uh, on the project.
Cool.
Okay.
Well, thank you all very much.
Yeah.
Don't mean to stop now, it's out of my question.
Yeah.
Okay. We're here for any questions, so, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
I just don't know if that first building's gonna be big enough for a, a market. See, I'm thinking if we, we have so many different little farmers' markets everywhere, if you combine all those there, that might not be big enough. So, that second building might be, your second structure might be something, you know?
Yeah.
Well, if the county would like to contribute some more resources, we'll, we'll blow it up.
The...
Can we put a, can we put a couple of courtrooms down there?
Multi-per...
Yeah, we need, we need courtrooms, so we can...
Well, and that's, that's partially why we're looking at, if, if we can't afford a, a, a second pavilion in this, in this, uh, version, the, the green space and the way that's parking is set up, that's basically like a lot of the farmers' markets we have in town, which are just tent setups and, and, you know, vendors can back up to those. So, technically, this is about twice, if, if you use both of those spots, it's about twice the size of kind of our biggest farmer's market in town right now, so...
And we are trying to shift as much of the funding that we have available now for the, for the actual facility. I can, we can go back and get trails later. Uh, there's several funding mechanisms for those. Um, so, we're focusing the trails money into the, so we can make it nice facility, nice bathrooms. We just want it to be a little bit more upscale than some of the other facilities that we have.
Very good.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Maybe see you tonight. And, uh, Eric, do I need to just kinda pull this out?
Do we have a copy of that?
Fifty cents in there, you didn't get another...
Is that yours or ours?
Out of time.
Or save it on the desktop or something, or...
Do you really have to hit that, remove hardware, and you just yank it out of there like I do?
That's what I was wondering.
Might be why it doesn't work sometimes.
Yeah, that's why Brian's not up here right now. He'd be screaming. Don't do that.
Sorry. I'll get, I'll get rid of that so you guys are not distracted.
Wait a second.
Okay, well, they're doing, I guess we can, we can proceed. Do we have any commission comments? Okay, next is business contracts, approval and signing of the engagement letter with Dodson and Waters and Ralph Cho Public Administration.
Well, good morning again. And all I wanted to do was formally present a new engagement letter for my new attorney. As you well know, my previous attorney was appointed a judge. So, I have engaged Ryan Waters to be my attorney. And it's simply, um, pretty much the same as Joe's was. His per-hour rate will be one-twenty-five, and I think the going rate in the community is three-hundred, none to exceed fifteen thousand per year. And other than that, um, it's basically the same. If for some reason I do go over fifteen thousand, which I don't anticipate doing, but you never know, I would come back and ask for approval of an addendum.
You got the contract in?
Yes.
Okay. You reviewed it, Jill?
Yes.
Good, Sam?
Yes, Sam.
Okay. Make a motion to approve and sign the engagement letter and hourly fee arrangement with Dodson and Waters.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thanks.
Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Make a motion to approve of accounts payable upon review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Sheriff Wheeler to discuss repair of emergency generator.
During our, the maintenance, uh, daily maintenance inspection of the, our emergency generator, some issues with it. Uh, they need to get it fixed. It's seventeen hundred dollars, uh, seventeen-eighty-two, I think. Uh, I have it in my building maintenance fund to be able to pay that.
If you have any question, Jordy's here. Tell him, Jordy.
He's trying to ignore you right now.
It's normal maintenance, I mean, it's just, they keep, they change batteries every two years just so they're strong Spartan if it needs to be. And then they, it's time to flush operator, so they wanna put new...
Thermostat.
Thermostat in while they're doing it, so...
Thermostat in while they're doing it. So.
Yeah, we don't need to bid it or anything. I mean, this is general maintenance. It's not, I mean, crazy coming out of your.
We have a contract with them.
So. I guess, do we need a motion at seventeen hundred dollars? Debbie, you want a motion?
Since you have it, yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the repair of the emergency generator in the amount of seventeen eighty-two and six cents with coming sales and service.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Approval and signing of change order number one, twenty twenty-four asphalt overlay program.
So, this change order is for the final closeout documents for the twenty twenty-four asphalt overlay program with Jefferson Asphalt. Primary reason for additional cost is a difference between tabulated and actual quantities due to irregularities in the surface and width of the roads. And we actually had lesser amount of modified coal milling. Overall, this is an increase in construction by fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
You good?
Yes.
Make motion to sign change order number one and the final closeout for the two thousand twenty-four asphalt overlay program, project number twenty twenty-four dash five zero one dash one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of subdivision street acceptance.
Yes.
So, this is for subdivision streets that were constructed this past year. They will be accepted on a one-year interim period. And then after that, in a final inspection, we will accept them into the county highway system. And this year, or this time around, we have three streets, Summerbrook Court, Summerbrook Drive, and Amanda Drive, all in the Summerfield Estates.
Four copies there for you to sign.
Okay.
You got the list of the street test drive down? I didn't have the attached list on the attachment. So, you good, Sam?
Oh, but, all right. I'm good.
It's his birthday. I gotta let him know.
You gotta give it.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision street acceptance for Summerfield Estates, section three, Summerbrook Court, and then Summerfield Estates, section four, Summerbrook Drive, and Summerfield Estates, section four, Amanda Drive.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion and approval of LEPC grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, uh, the, um, the LEPC grant, I am still trying to get that paperwork together. This is a annual grant, it's become annual now, that is one hundred percent paid for by the state. You apply through the MERC, the Missouri Emergency Response Commission, for this LEPC grant. Currently, I have three projects, one by Jeff City Fire, and that's not complete. But they're looking for electronic vehicle keys that tell the EV vehicles that it's in a charging mode. So, it makes it safe for them to then go in and handle whatever fire or whatever's going on within the vehicle. Osage Fire is asking for suits level A and B. And then the hazmat team has some sensors and some other supplies at which they're, they're requesting. That grant, LEPC is a hundred thousand dollars is what you can ask for. Currently, forty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars is what I have totaled. But again, I don't have that all complete yet. The, the good thing about this grant is, um, um, once, once we have the, um, uh, the totals, it's, it's now come early on this year that we already have a budget line item for this. We don't have any funds in it because the grant is, from this year is, is gone. So, we would be able to see what we're awarded and then put that into the line item. So, we wouldn't have to go through and have the announcements to amend the budget for next year. So, we could just do that as we get the grant. So, currently, I don't have anything other than, you know, discussion and, um, if you guys are okay with, once we get awarded funds, you know, adding that into the budget. So, I don't have anything specific.
Is this an application for anything and everything under emergency services or is?
It, it handles anything that's allowed under our chemical emergency, I'm trying to remember the acronyms.
So, it's not under the general stuff or is this for some of our regional equipment or just under?
No, no. This, this is just for department-specific funds. So, like Jeff City Fire would be the recipient, Osage would be the recipient, but LEPC is the applicant. We, we've done this before. We had EV fire blankets. Last year, that was a Jeff City Fire. We've had, oh, the, the, the system, the first year, we had a, a data terminal that was also through Jeff City Fire. We've had supplies come through for our hazmat team. And of course, we have done the best we could to apply every year for the full amount of the hundred thousand, and we don't always get the hundred thousand. But last year, we were able to get medical exams for our hazmat team. And I haven't gotten the paperwork back from, from them, so we might not be able to do that this year on that grant. But we've been able to support not just Cole County, but other fire districts that have those hazmat needs and been able to support them as well. So, I can bring you some more information on that once I get that.
What all the equipment do we have over there is under, I know we got that big hazmat truck, right?
Yes.
Is that ours or is that regional?
It's a regional asset, but it is ours. I mean, we, we have the insurance and the title.
We own it and are responsible for all of it, but we do get money from them. Do we get anything from LEPC to keep them, I mean, up to date?
Not that specifically, not that piece of equipment. But I know we've gotten sensors from our LEPC grants before. The LEPC is a, as a whole, several years ago, bought laptops to put into seventy-one fifty. That's the, the big hazmat truck and into the MEOC. And so, when we get deployed, we can set up our incident command so people have laptops.
Same as the haz, hazmat truck? I mean, do we own it or is that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we own it. We title it. It was provided by Homeland Security Funding. But it's something that we own now.
But that's part of the, uh, I don't know, part of getting the grant for it was that we have to own it and store it, but it's a regional asset, right? Or is it still ours and we get to make the decisions on that?
We do make decisions, but the preference is always, if we have the ability to deploy it within the region, we do.
Okay. Because I was thinking that was a regional asset and they owned it. It just basically was sitting here. We took care of it. We had more room to do that and the abilities than some of these other smaller counties and stuff. So.
Yeah, it's ours.
It's been utilized by other counties for when we had the fire.
It's been used several times.
Yeah, it, it, it's used. So, we, we get the grant money and then we always find something to spend the grant funds on.
We try.
Yeah.
Yeah. We try not to give anything back. But that's all I have right now with LEPC. I'll make sure to send that once we get. I have to have the LEPC group, um, see the document and vote on it, and then I'll be able to, to have that. Wheeler is the chair, so he's the signee, you know? But I just wanted to let you all know about that amount that we have so far. And if that is the amount that we're granted, then maybe we could add that into the budget since we're coming up on our budget cycle and we already have a line item that would support it.
So, it's technically not an application for that amount or?
Not, not, not yet. No, not yet.
So, there's really no approval?
No action today.
No, no action today.
When do we know how much, if we proceed the grant and how much?
December-ish. It'll be, it, it should be no later than December. The turnaround on this grant was really fast this year. They only gave us four weeks. And so, that's, that's been kind of the problem too, is some of these items are larger items and trying to get quotes and get responses back from folks is, is difficult. So, um, that's, that's some of the issues that we've had in even getting this together.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then.
It's a discussion and approval of EMPG grant. Is that yours as well?
That's mine as well. So, this is the EMPG mini, which is a part of, let me make sure I give you all the, uh, the color copy. But this, I, I added some, some documents in the back here that have explained those three grant items. And so, in working with the city, they had a lightning strike on one of their outdoor warning sirens, and it has completely disabled it, and they're trying to figure out a way to replace that siren. EMPG mini gives us as a priority, outdoor warning system, both repair and replacement. And so, that, that I've assigned as our first project in trying to receive the forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars that would replace everything on that site at the Truman Street or Truman Boulevard, except for the pole itself. The pole has been deemed as reusable. And then our next project would be our maintenance to other outdoor systems within the county. So, Taos needs a amplifier that needs repaired. And then the center town siren needs woodpecker holes and wrapping put around it.
I'm sure you brought that up.
It's almost, it's almost a joke now.
Harry and I are both here. We get sidetracked on that one. You better keep going.
And so, that's going to cost about two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And then finally, this is a project that was left over from last year's. When we activate the EOC, you know, a lot of the support staff should have identifiable means for themselves. We have T-cards that we place on the tables to identify where the operations and where the logistics and where the finance people would go. But we really don't have any other way to, to identify them. And so, this is a kit that has vests that have your placard already put onto the vests. It has a color code. So, depending on which division you're in, you get a certain color. And, and that's easily identifiable as you move throughout the room in the EOC. So, this is a kit just to kind of improve those operations when we have a functioning EOC. And that would be for three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. So, the total of this grant, which is a fifty thousand dollar grant, is forty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. So, I got as close to fifty as I could. And like I said, last year, we applied for projects and all three of them were denied. So, it's not a guarantee on this particular grant.
Okay. Make a motion. Don't, we've already received this or it's just the application?
This is the application, and there's an electronic signature for Sam.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and Sam to electronically sign the EMPG grant. There's three projects. Number one at forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Project two at two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, and project three at three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got a picture of woodpecker all in there.
I know.
It's something.
That's worse than the one, woodpecker pulls on the east end.
Let Harry know. Thank you all.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business?
Yes. Um, the treasurer asked if I would present this for their new office across the street. They are requesting a breakroom table and two chairs for the total of eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. And I know they're also looking into getting some blinds for over there, but they don't have quotes yet for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm biting my tongue. That's just, we're, we're not even done yet. It just keeps going and going. It's like the end of the rabbit at this point.
Yes.
Do we need approval board or what do you, I mean, it's.
It's below.
No, you need your.
Approve it, but it's eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for shreefers.
Do we approve all eight hundred dollar purchases?
Well, this is unique. This is coming out of Capitol. It's not like, um, it wasn't budgeted for. So, anything we do, we kind of like to have. So, we have on record that you guys agreed to it.
All right. So, what do you got? Table and chairs?
Table and chairs.
How much was it? Eight fifty?
Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the breakroom table and two chairs, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars with.
Shreefers.
Shreefers. Shreefers.
Aye, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You don't have to. I still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, shut up, Sam. I lost a bit early this morning, if you could.
Okay.
Friendly way.
Okay. Do we have anything else before we?
Anyone? Go in once, go in twice. Make a motion to stand in recess until four thirty.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye. Hey, Eric, if you got, oh, not you, chief. Yeah, I give you the chief title and.
Director title.